Good evening. This is the special meeting of the Board of Commissioners, St. Charles Parish Housing Authority, Tuesday, November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The time is now six P. M. I call the meeting to order. Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this time we open for public comment. Seeing no one in the council chambers, public comment is closed. Review and approval of agenda. Any board discussion? Mr. Woods.
A question, I think, for our ED. Do you, do you plan the slides that you presented? Do you plan to do any presentation from that?
Not.
Any comments?
Not from the slides directly. That was more for your information and references that relates to the HUD offices webinar that they had. That was the product of that.
Okay.
But if there's any questions based on the slides that I did provide in your packet, we do have the ability to pull it up and discuss or receive any questions from there.
And I guess what my point I was getting at, are we going to have, at least have the discussion what RAD is and whatever that transition might be before we?
Yes, yes. And some of that is also going to be included in my executive director's report.
All right. Thank you. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Woods. Any additional discussion regarding review and approval of agenda?
I'd like to pass the motion. I'd like to second. Right, I'll pass the motion. I'm second.
All right. We have a second for approval of the agenda. All in favor, cast your votes.
Aye.
Yeah, we can do it verbally. There we go. All right, that passes. All right. Mr. Jackson.
Good evening, Commissioners. Before you, there are two resolutions for your consideration. The first resolution for consideration is a resolution to authorize the withdrawal of St. Charles Parish Housing Authority Streamline Voluntary Conversion Application. This action is being considered as HUD has informed SCPHA that we are no longer able to proceed with the previously submitted application and must pivot to a new repositioning or conversion strategy. In order to pivot to a new strategy, the housing authority must formally request to withdraw its pending application. The passage of the resolution also will allow the housing authority to place a few of its current units that are awaiting conversion that were not put into mod status before the previous application was submitted. That would allow us to put those units into the mod status, which would incrementally help our operating subsidy. We are requesting the passage of this resolution, which would then allow for the selection of the repositioning strategy that the authority would be moving toward. The second resolution is for the selection of the RAD Section eighteen Blend Repositioning Conversion Strategy. HUD indicated to us that as we are not able to move forward with the SVC application, that the RAD Section eighteen conversion repositioning strategy would be the repositioning strategy to pivot to. Other repositioning strategies do not allow, excuse me, do not apply to SCPHA because of our size, our mission to continue to be a public and affordable housing provider, or because of the incremental nature of the redevelopment activities under other strategies. After researching this new strategy and having multiple meetings with HUD, the main differences between the two are the lower rents and that will, we are, we've been told will come up pending a HUD PIH notice and stronger tenant protections as to their right to return. While we still have a few unanswered questions from HUD, which we asked since our last board meeting, specifically the possibility of SCPHA-focused office hours from the RAD desk, what support outside of that HUD could provide, when the ninety-ten PAH notice would be released, and a request for the new conversion process checklist, we have been promised support from the RAD office with HUD to allow us to expedite, excuse me, or streamline our process considering the steps taken to prepare and submit the SVC application. Standard Enterprises, our developer partner, has indicated in writing their concerns, but also their willingness to continue on with us despite the SVC application withdrawal, provided we work collaboratively to secure the needed gap financing for the RAD Section eighteen Blend Repositioning Strategy. The process by which to secure the needed gap financing will be undertaken once provided with a projection based on the updated PIH notice regarding rents going from eighty-twenty to ninety-ten and subsequent conversations with federal, statewide, and local stakeholders, included but not limited to HUD, the state of Louisiana, Louisiana Housing Corporation, St. Charles Parish Government, and as well as state and local corporate partners. Lastly, per the terms of our recovery agreement with HUD, SCPHA must go through a conversion process to remain in compliance with the recovery agreement and avoid any further potential penalties from HUD that could create an issue for our residents, you, our board, and our community stakeholders. The fact that we had a certain process that was almost to the finish line is certainly a devastating setback for everyone that I mentioned. At the same time, we do have to move forward and be as respectful, but also as aggressive as we can be to put this agency and this conversion process in a position to be considered for approval by HUD again. So we are requesting consideration and approval from the board this evening on both resolutions in the order that they have been presented. Please let me know if you have any questions at this time.
Yes, Mr. Jackson, I have a couple of questions. You mentioned the lower rents. I know that under RAD, the rents that we can receive are lower than anticipated under the voluntary streamlined conversion. Can you elaborate a little bit on the difference in what's allowed and where we would be?
So, from what I understand, the eighty-twenty formula that is used for RAD Section eighteen, that is what is going to be going up to ninety-ten based on HUD's indication that there will be a PIH notice. That does change the formula that Standard uses to model out the financial feasibility in favor of it being a more realistic process and outcome to achieve.
Okay. And under the streamlined voluntary conversion, what was the rent calculation?
I believe it was almost hundred percent.
Okay. That's what I thought. All right. And then I know we received a letter from Standard expressing their concerns and also their willingness to proceed. There was, there was some verbiage in that letter that kind of indicated that potentially they didn't believe that this was a mandate. However, we also know that the field offices already told us that it won't be approved as a streamlined conversion. Being that streamlined conversion initially came into play under the previous presidential administration of Donald Trump, is there any indication that streamlined conversion may be possible under the new administration coming forward?
So, the political impact of the presidential election, that was not something that was discussed with HUD.
Okay.
I believe the action taken by HUD is purely based on litigation and not necessarily administrative guidance from the executive branch.
Okay.
So, I mean, I can ask the question, but as of right now, I'm not sure of that answer specifically. It's, I mean, it's possible because when a new administration comes in, you know, the department operates at the direction of the new administration. Again, I'm, and this is purely speculative on my part based on the conversations that I had, but the decision to, the judicial decision to prevent the plaintiff in that court case from being able to proceed with their streamlined voluntary conversion, that impacted all others because everybody was doing the exact same, bypassing the exact same part of the process, which was the cost analysis, which the courts found that should not have been allowed. So, I can ask the question, but I don't have that specific answer at this time.
Okay. And speaking to that point, did we also, as part of our process, bypass that cost analysis?
That is the, technically, from what I was told, that is why it is called a streamlined voluntary conversion because it's specifically set up for smaller PHAs who a cost analysis would either be too expensive for or would not gain, we wouldn't get any sufficient evidence just because of the smallest, the smaller size of our subsidy that we would receive from HUD.
And then, to that point, there is a cost analysis component of RAD?
There is not a cost analysis component of RAD, but there is a capital needs assessment that we'll have to redo.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right. Any additional board discussion or questions? Mr. Woods?
Yeah. Mr. Jackson, in the presentation that we had on the paper, I went through some of those and have some questions.
Sure. Give me one second.
I'm going to start with particularly on page thirteen of that presentation.
This is the one you're referring to?
Yes, yes.
Yes, sir.
Let me say the conversion requirements. We all know that we've done everything we're supposed to do, so let me get that right to the question. Can some parts of that conversion unfold? Say, the environmental studies that we did and a number of things? Are some of those things interchangeable? Can some information, you know, can that, some process that we've done already, can that be already, say, we did it and just put into our RAD blend if we went that way?
Yes. And that's actually something that I got from HUD as well as from Standard in terms of the environmental review specifically, because there's a time, a prescribed time period that they would be good for. And I think it's something to the effect of three to five years. I don't have the exact number, but I think we're still within that time period that we would be able to utilize it for the new positioning, repositioning strategy.
Okay. That's softened things a little bit.
And I think that's part of the intention from HUD as they explained it was that if there's something, you know, because technically, it's like we're going to be starting all over again, but if there's already something that we've done that still is good or still is useful, we would be allowed to incorporate that into what we're doing now.
All right. Good answer. All right. On page nine of that same presentation.
Yes, sir.
It talks about some of our ownership options. Can you help me understand how that affects ownership and what's the short and long, long plan for that? Do we lose ownership of things or how is that going to work?
No, it would be similar to the SVC. We would maintain ownership, but we would engage the master developer as the property manager.
Okay. I think I remember we did have the comment. All right. That's good. Good deal on there. And page six of that same presentation.
This one?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I think we chatted a little bit prior to the meeting, but we talked about drawdowns and things that we haven't claimed and so money's out there. So, my question is going to be, is some of the money that we're expecting to collect from drawdowns and stuff, can that be used towards trying to close that gap that we're talking about?
Yes, it can.
It can be. Okay. And we will in some time know what that number is so we know kind of what we need to go out and be asking for.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay, that's good.
And to be specific for all the commissioners, this repositioning strategy allows PHAs to utilize their capital fund as well as their operating fund reserves or those funds that have not yet been drawn down to assist with the cost of the conversion. So, the projection would be necessary from Standard to understand what that would need to then understand what, the need would be for that then to understand what we would be asking for to achieve that, to meet the financing gap.
Page seven of that same.
Yes, sir.
And I think, Chairman, you asked something about rents and lower rents and it has to do with rents. Yeah. Can you help me understand what this page is trying to tell us?
So, this is a page comparing the breakdown of public housing subsidies to the breakdown of HCV hap subsidies. So, there's more freedom and flexibility with a hap subsidy than there is with a public housing subsidy because it can either go to operating or capital.
Okay. So, we have a little bit more flexibility in how we spend the fund.
Yes.
Good answers. This is softening me up a little bit. I think that might be all I had. Let me.
I'm going to go ahead and give Commissioner Bailey a moment while you.
Yeah, so basically, just wanted to see if you and the development partners talked about like a timeline. How far are we going to be pushed back now? Considering we need to do this transition? And I mean, I know we can still use some information in the work that we've done before on the streamlined conversion can apply to this one. So, you know, I'm hoping that will give us, you know, cut some of that time down.
And I'll say the indication about the timeline, at least from my perspective, has come from HUD. Usually, without already going through a conversion process, like if we were just starting this from scratch, it would take anywhere between eighteen to twenty-four months. HUD has indicated that they're trying to facilitate, I don't want to use the word streamline, but try to facilitate support and assistance to us to get it to around twelve months. Now, that is contingent upon us being able to secure the financing funding. So. So, it's going to be, I mean, and I apologize. I'm sorry.
No, I was going to say, I'm just going to say, so that's really the next step that we need to figure out is where the money's going to come from.
The checklist and the, so that, what I was going to say is it's a twofold focus. The checklist, once we receive it from HUD, indicating what steps we need to take and what steps we have already achieved, and at the same time, pursuing the gap financing. So, multitasking in a way, yes.
And we've reached out to LHC and HUD. Is HUD going to offer any assistance?
That was part of the questions that I asked Andy, and I'm going to follow up with her on tomorrow when I send, you know, what we've achieved from this meeting. And LHC is indicated that they're, without understanding the ask specifically, a discussion on what our need might be.
Yeah, okay.
Because I touched base with Mr. Swayze prior to.
To that point, I know that any source that we look to for funds, it's going to be first come, first served. Where are we positioned as of today in the lineup in comparison to other authorities throughout the state that would be looking potentially in the same buckets for funding?
So, and you did ask this meeting, this question last meeting, and since that meeting, I'm not exactly sure yet if there are any other public housing authorities in the state that are in our same position. When we were at the LHC conference, funding is typically made available during different rounds during the year. I think they just had one in September. But that doesn't preclude requests, you know, that would be, I guess, outside of the normal, the normal funding round calendar, you know, during the calendar year. So, you know, it's not just going to be conversations with LHC staff, but also engaging with the board of LHC as well.
All right. Speaking back to timeline, I know you said that it looks like HUD's trying to work to get this process done in about twelve months or so, give or take. How does, from where we're at now, with our previous timeline on record, anticipated timeline for the streamlined conversion, where does that put us in a completion date in comparison with the previous streamlined conversion?
Completion all the way through redevelopment?
Yeah.
Probably twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
And the streamlined conversion was twenty-six?
Twenty-six different, I think part of it was twenty-five.
Yeah.
And then there was other parts that were twenty-six.
So, about a year and a half.
Yeah.
Difference. Okay. All right. Appreciate that. Any additional?
Yes, I'm just going to.
Mr. Woods?
I don't know. Just so I can really kind of understand where we are. I know we haven't said numbers, but I'm going to pick this number from what our standard gave us. So, just technically and just putting out there, folks, so folks know just what we're dealing with. Our development partner is projecting like about a five million dollar gap. Lots of money. Our expectation is some drawdowns. That we expect them to get any idea what that might be? Just the roughest.
Estimate. I would say, because I looked at it today, I would say probably somewhere in the range of four to six hundred thousand.
Okay.
And that's based on just previous years that were not drawn down upon.
So, that leaves us realistically, and we want everybody out there listening, so that's going to leave us to have to come with about four and a half million dollars to try to bring this to fruition.
And I will say this, noting even though we did have the discussion with Standard about the ninety-ten, this still is based on the eighty-twenty. So, with ninety-ten, that number would come down, the five million, without whatever we would put.
Could you, just for clarity, and anybody might be listening, you say the ninety, eighty-twenty, ninety-ten? What are you, what are you, what are you saying?
It's just the breakdown of the subsidy that we would get from HUD. So, eighty-twenty is based on a hundred, a hundred and twenty percent fair market rents plus twenty percent of the resident, the rental assistance demonstration. So, basically HUD covers eighty percent. With the ninety-ten, HUD will cover ninety.
Okay.
And then the rest would have to come from rents as well as whatever financing.
So, it's potentially ten percent greater rent subsidy that we would receive?
Yes, which would be the reason why the financing gap would change.
Would change. Okay.
But that would be a savings for the resident?
That would be a savings for the project. Yeah. The rent would be based on income. So, it, I mean, that really wouldn't, I guess, I guess in the long run, it would, but definitely for the vitality and economic, or financial feasibility of the project based on what we would have to come up with.
I'll just say something. Tough, tough decision. That's why we're up here. I'm just going to keep telling myself it's doable and believing that it is doable. I'm going to tonight kind of accept that our conversion is literally off the table. I almost thought I was not even going to vote to take it off, but HUD is just saying what it is. So, I guess just moving forward, it's just that we're going to have to figure out to come up, what about four and a half million dollars? And it's usually the residence that gets the brunt of the changes that happen, even though it's nothing that we have to do or whatever. So, anything, but that's just kind of where we stand. I just wanted the public.
Yeah.
We don't have an option.
I still got you on that. I just want the public to understand the numbers that we're dealing in and what we're reaching for. With that, that is all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Woods. Anyone else? All right. Next agenda this evening is our resolutions. We do have a resolution twenty-four eleven thirteen zero one. It's a resolution of the St. Charles Parish Housing Authority Board of Commissioners to approve and adopt a resolution to withdraw previously submitted St. Charles Parish Housing Authority Streamline Conversion Application. Whereas St. Charles Parish Housing Authority is a public housing agency established pursuant to Louisiana law, and whereas the mission of the authority is to provide adequate and affordable housing, economic opportunity, and a suitable living environment free from discrimination, and whereas the authority must authorize through a board resolution any repositioning strategies that it wishes to undertake or rescind, and whereas the authority, in line with HUD regulations, and after receiving word from HUD that its streamlined voluntary conversion application will not be approved, must formally withdraw the current application via board resolution and send that resolution to the HUD, SEC, and the local field office. And we did receive memorandum from the staff and the executive director with the recommendation to approve and adopt this resolution. Is there any board discussion?
If we, I think I have one quick question.
Mr. Woods?
If we did not rescind this, would that hamper us from pursuing the RAD blend? Also, we just, you have to rescind before you can say you want to do the other one?
From everything that I got from HUD, yes. That's the step that you have to take since you did formally. See, it was interesting, the conversation that I had with the field office. They asked me where the, when did we decide what to move towards? And I said, well, from everything I read, I thought that we had to have a resolution rescinding or withdrawing the application. They're like, oh, yeah, that, yeah. So, to your, yes, to your question, that has to happen first.
All right. Okay. Any additional questions, comments from the board? All right, Mr. Woods?
Mr. Chairman, this is one of the toughest motions I've made, but I'm going to make it because it needs to be done. So, with that, I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-four dash eleven thirteen dash zero one, a resolution of the St. Charles Parish Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, approving and adopting a resolution to withdraw the previously submitted St. Charles Parish Housing Authority Streamline Conversion Application.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Woods. Mr. Woods has moved to approve Resolution twenty-four eleven thirteen zero one, a resolution of the St. Charles Parish Housing Authority Board of Commissioners approving and adopting a resolution to withdraw the previously submitted St. Charles Parish Housing Authority Streamline Conversion Application. That's been seconded by Commissioner Bailey. Please cast your votes. All right. Resolution twenty-four eleven thirteen zero one has been approved by unanimous vote. Thank you all. All right. The next resolution before us is twenty-four eleven thirteen oh two, approving and adopting a resolution to select the RAD Section eighteen Blend Conversion as the repositioning strategy and to authorize the preparation of the RAD Section eighteen Blend Conversion Application. Is there any board discussion? All right, seeing no board discussion, I'll, I'll go ahead and read the resolution in the record as I did the last one. We did receive a memorandum from the executive director and the staff recommending approval of resolution twenty-four eleven thirteen oh two, resolution of the St. Charles Parish Housing Authority Board of Commissioners approving and adopting a resolution to select the RAD section eighteen conversion as the repositioning strategy for St. Charles Parish Housing Authority and to authorize preparation of the RAD section eighteen blend conversion application. Whereas St. Charles Parish Housing Authority is a public housing agency established pursuant to Louisiana law, whereas the mission of the authority is to promote adequate and affordable housing, economic opportunity, and a suitable living environment free from discrimination, and whereas the authority through resolution twenty-four eleven thirteen zero one has requested to withdraw its streamlined voluntary conversion application with HUD, and whereas the authority intends to pivot to a different repositioning strategy to redevelop and repair its public housing properties, and whereas in line with HUD regulations on repositioning strategies selects RAD section eighteen blend conversion repositioning strategy. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of the St. Charles Parish Housing Authority by resolution requests that HUD makes any and all technical assistance and support to ensure the viability and success of this new repositioning strategy, and whereas, once the new repositioning strategy is accepted by HUD, the Board of Commissioners of the St. Charles Parish Housing Authority authorizes the executive director or their designee and staff of the authority to begin work to prepare the RAD section eighteen blend conversion repositioning application for submission to HUD and to ensure that all matters and due diligence are adhered to to ensure compliance with all HUD regulations on repositioning of public housing properties. Any board discussion? Do we have a motion from the board? Commissioner Bailey?
Oh, Mr. Chair, I have a motion that we approve resolution two-four-one-one-one-three-zero-two, approving and adopting the resolution to select the RAD slash section eight blend conversion as a repositioning strategy and to authorize the preparation of the RAD slash section eighteen blend conversion application.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Bailey. Commissioner Bailey's moved to accept resolution twenty-four eleven thirteen oh two, resolution of the St. Charles Parish Housing Authority Board of Commissioners approving and adopting a resolution to select the RAD section eighteen conversion as the repositioning strategy for St. Charles Parish Housing Authority and to authorize the preparation of the RAD section eighteen blend conversion application. Do we have a second? Ms. Diggs, thank you, Ms. Diggs. Ms. Diggs is seconded, please cast your votes. All right, by unanimous vote, that motion passes. Now therefore be it resolved that the proposed resolution to select RAD section eighteen blend conversion as the repositioning strategy for St. Charles Parish Authority and to authorize the preparation of the RAD section eighteen blend conversion application is hereby approved and adopted for implementation. Thank y'all. Let me just place my agenda here. All right, at this time, is there any further board discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Woods?
Again, we've all made some, I think, some tough decisions up, up here tonight. Just wanna assure all the stakeholders involved, particularly our residents, that this is a setback, but we will overcome it and we're gonna work our way through it. What I would ask of our ED and all of our staff is that, since we know this is gonna take a while for this to happen, and per our INSPIR inspections and everything that we know that exists in our units now, I'm gonna ask that we do every, do diligence, everything it takes to eliminate every, almost every probable dysfunction in those units that our residents, starting tonight, and they are, and they are getting better, live in the best decent conditions that we can provide. I know that we're making some changes, we've done some inspections, but I'm just hoping that we just super, superman, supercharge our maintenance efforts and all the things that, that we can do to have our residents just live in the best conditions that, that we can provide and just not stay, stay as we are.
And, and do you mind if I?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Jackson. Thank you, Mr. Woods.
Commissioner Woods, thank you for that. And I know that all the commissioners share your sentiment. This was not how I thought month five would be. Because when we talked, when I think I had my first conversation with anybody from St. Charles Parish about the possibility of, of coming here, the first thing that came out of their mouth was the conversion. So the importance of where we are now is not lost on myself nor the staff. The residents that we have discussed this with have expressed their disappointment because some that did move from one property that is currently shuttered to boutique, you know, they were looking forward to the, the, the possibility in the day that they returned. So that is burned into my brain. Understanding that we have a, a dual focus in, in, in getting the application completed and also working to secure the financing. I, I, I have a, a tri-focus or a three-part focus in terms of not putting us in a position where we fall back in any way, shape or form as it relates to the, the, the quality of life and the maintenance and, and repair of the units. This was communicated to the, the, the staff when we started having the conversations about the repositioning strategy having to change. Because, you know, I think there was a, a thought that with the redevelopment, that the, the INSPIR inspection that we had in August was probably gonna be our last. But we don't, we don't work every day to prepare for the test. We work every day to learn and what we have to do and understand what we have to do to get the units to where they need to be. So INSPIR inspection is coming up, whenever they come up, that will be our gauge and our metric to show that we have been taking the, the responsibility of that due diligence that you mentioned seriously. So I can assure you, we will be a hawk on that.
And I think my fellow board members, you, Mr. Jackson, and our staff will just, just continue to hang in there and we just, we will get there.
And I'd like, I'd like to just stay, say in closing to the public and anyone listening that, you know, this, this pivot that we're making is not due to any fault of the agency. This is, this is a new mandate from HUD to change our course based on litigation that's happening elsewhere. And it's just changed the whole process that we have to go through and, and the procedure of the whole process. So it's certainly a setback. It was not expected by anybody and it was through no fault of anybody within or without the, the agency here in St. Charles Parish. So I just wanna, again, thank our executive director for staying on top of this whole process and, and participating in all the discussions and meetings and everything that you've had to do to, to keep the board abreast of, of what's, you know, going on and for all of the input and concern from the staff and, and the board. Appreciate everybody. That being said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I move that we adjourn our special meeting.
Commissioner Woods has moved to adjourn. Do we have a second? Mr. Bailey's seconded, please cast your votes. All right, that passes. The time is now six forty, we are adjourned.